Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm happy to welcome you all to our city council meeting for Wednesday, May 22, 2019. At this time, for our moment of silence, you know, as we've talked about this being the can-do community, but also a community where people come together and find out not only what's best for them, but what's best for their entire community. And as we've had some challenges with some flooding and other issues, we hear repeatedly, over and over again, how the community responded. People just in civilian clothes stopped by and started helping out. That's always very important as well. I received communication from five different mayors south of us who were saying if it hadn't been for using your riverfront like you did, and we really feel bad about the breach in the Hescos, of course, but our city might have been completely destroyed, the amount of water we were able to displace. So there's a variety of creative ways, and we're going to be looking at that in the future, but we've got to think not only of ourselves, but inclusively of the people around us. So with that, let's stop for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Rossen, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Brian, would you please call the roll?
Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Tompkins?
Here.
Grip?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Clule?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
And Dunn?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. And again, I want to wish all of you a good evening. We have some guests here, families here, people that have gone through our Citizens Academy, so we're delightful, delighted to see you all. As we begin this meeting of our city council, I want to welcome you all and those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you are participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, hi there, kids. There we go. There we go. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we would ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under Public with Business, which is the portion that is at the end of the meeting, and we will wait for you then at that time. When addressing the city council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So again, welcome and thank you for being here. Will an Alderman move the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for May 8th, please? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, those are approved. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just a reminder that City Hall will be closed on Monday in celebration of Memorial Day, and with it being a fifth Wednesday next week, we will not have a meeting here, but we'll resume back in June.
Thank you very much, so enjoy your time and your upcoming Memorial Day weekend as well. Will an Alderman move approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for May 15, 2019? It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. That report is approved. Next, we have one proclamation and one presentation this evening. First, our proclamation, and Alderman Dunn is going to deliver that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proclamation reads, "Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas public works and first responders responsible for protecting, operating, maintaining, and restoring critical infrastructure in times of emergency, and whereas the support and the understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as building, rental, and environmental inspections, composting, engineering, facility maintenance, fleet management, forestry, natural resources, solid waste collection, sewer and street maintenance, parking, transit, and water pollution control, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on all these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public work staff, and whereas the efficiencies of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the public works department is materially influenced by the citizens and the council's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Therefore, we, Mayor Frank Clips, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through May 25, 2019, as Public Works Week. In the city of Davenport and recognize its 26th anniversary of being a department of public works, we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works and recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, dated this 22nd day of May, 2019, and I move the proclamation."
There is a motion and a second for this proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Alderman Dunn, would you make the presentation? And I think Nicole Gleason, our Director of Public Works, is going to accept it, and as you give this proclamation applause, make sure you give Nicole extra applause. We've been some challenging times with all the things going on, so thank you very much. Let's stand for a picture there. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for this recognition. Obviously, the last five months have been quite the challenge, so we appreciate the support. We are planning a luncheon for the staff June 14th if the flooding cooperates, and you would all be welcome to attend. I'll follow up with an email as well.
Thank you, Nicole, and thank you to all your team. Thank you very much. We have a couple of presentations this evening. The first one, I'm excited to be able to present, and this is a little bit of history. HO, or Henry Otto Seifert, the lumber company, was established in Davenport, Iowa, in 1892. The original Davenport location was on West Second Street, where the U.S. Post Office is today. In 1964, Seifert Lumber opened the doors to its current location at 4112 West Kimberly Road, and Seifert Lumber currently employs 21 full-time employees. In 1972, Seifert Lumber Company was purchased by Wilbur Burris, and his son Bill owns and operates, operates the business now, and his Bill's son Nathan Burris partakes in the operation of the family-owned business. Seifert Lumber Company remains one of the Quad Cities' leading retailers and distributors of lumber, building supplies, and home improvement materials to contractors and homeowners. Seifert Lumber continues to build on its long, rich tradition as being a proud, family-owned business in the Quad Cities for over 127 years. Seifert Lumber Company is honored to support Davenport and displays their support in various ways. Their employees have been involved in Habitat for Humanity, the Student Built Homes Program, United Way, Homeless Veterans Housing, the Rotary Club, and many other worthwhile organizations. We want to thank Seifert Lumber Company for their 127 years of dedicated customer service, your devotion to providing the city of Davenport with the supplies needed to build our community, and your continued contributions to the economic development and the quality of life in Davenport, Iowa. Seifert Lumber is another wonderful example of one of Davenport's local businesses that are the foundation of our community. I'm going to come around and make the presentation.
Come on, all the Seiferts. Symbolic of the foundation, this is a brick we have made for these occasions, and it reads, "Local business, the foundation of our community, recognizes the unique businesses of Davenport, Iowa, Seifert Lumber and Building Supplies, May 19, May 2019." Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Say a few words? Yeah. You can say it this way, because the camera's got you over there.
Well, thank you very much for this recognition. On behalf of our current employees and past employees, we're honored to receive this, and I especially want to encourage everyone to support your local businesses. It's important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, all of you. Thank you. Next, you know, one of the things, we've had a tremendous outpouring of citizens who've gotten involved in city government, new people getting on boards, commissions, and committees, people getting engaged, some running for office, and I think a big part of that is an effect of the Davenport University Citizens Academy, and this is cohort number five, graduation day. So I think we're going to, I'm going to come around, I'm going to ask Alderman McGinnis to come with me on this graduation ceremony, and if we knew, if somebody could play pomp and circumstance, we could have that music up for her. But we're going to go around and make the presentations for the individuals that are here. I just want to say there was about 20 graduates, indicative of their community service and activity, involved with so many different things. We have about nine of them here this evening. We'll make sure the rest of those get their diplomas, but it was a good, a very good experience, and I'm going to ask, when we get up there, Alderman McGinnis to kind of share some of her experiences with that as well. She does a great job with our citizens' engagement, and this is another good example of how she got involved with it. So let me come around, and Clay's going to help me. We're going to present the diplomas.
First, we're going to present, the first of one goes to Marion McGinnis. He's our third ward alderperson and citizen engagement chair, doing a phenomenal job. We're going to hear a little bit more about new parties in the park, but I'm going to make this, why don't you come around this side, Marion, and I'm going to officially shake your hand for the picture.
All right, thank you.
And before you, before we hand out the rest, why don't you give a little idea, some remarks about the, about the Citizens Academy?
Well, the Citizens Academy was a great, and I know many of you have been through Citizens Academy as well, it was a great opportunity to really learn about the city and to be challenged by city departments, and we had some fun things and serious things. And, and, you know, you continue to learn, because, you know, the city's a complicated place, lots of moving parts, and you continue to learn, you know, just how it works, and this close-up look and the time that staff spent in really making these special evenings, very special and very informative, was, was really impressive. It was also a great group of people who were there, so to, to be able to be in an academy with committed citizens like this was really special for me as well. I think I will have friends for a long time out of this, and the party starts later. No, just kidding. It was, it was a great experience, so thanks for letting me do it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to stay up to one picture of our group. If you want to hang up, you may. Hang up, yeah. Thank you. And Amy Allard Wells, Amy Wells.
Thank you.
We'll get an official one of us shaking hands, and then, oops. There we go. Let you hold that. Great. And you want to wait up here, too, we'll get one group photo.
All right.
For the, for the yearbook. Next one is Vikstrom. Where's Vik?
(mimicking Vikstrom)
That's Vik over there. Great.
Thank you.
And Jose Solaro Ferreira. Jose, is he here? He came up with the great community project he's working on right now. So we'll, we'll get that to him as well. Also, Sue Ramsit. Great. Thank you very much. If you want to wait for a picture, too, and we'll...
I'll do.
Kai Dickman. Want to get a picture, Dave? Here, you can hold on to that. Okay. Look up there at the camera. Camera's over here. Hazel, other side.
Can you look at me?
Rob Fielder.
(mimicking Robert Fielder)
I'm not holding you.
I'm making a snow mound.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to get a photo, Rob. And Jamie Kroger.
I'm clearly dressed for the occasion. I have baseball next.
All right. Got it? Thank you. Adam McWilliams. Come on up, Adam.
(mimicking Adam McWilliams)
Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you.
Come around here, just get our picture together. Great. There you go. You can hang out with the rest of them, get our picture, and then... Thank you. And Megan Murray. Congratulations, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Let's get our picture taken.
Perfect.
Got it? Okay, let's go back, get everybody lined up there. You guys all want to get behind him, we'll get one picture with the council.
(mimicking students) Put this to the middle. Keep going that way. Back over your tippy toes. One, two, three. Good. Thank you.
All right.
(mimicking students)
So for all of our graduates, and also for the Burises, and again, the long history of Seifert Lumber, we want to thank you all for that, and our public works department for that proclamation, so we're excited about all of that moving forward. Then next, we're going to have our petitions and communications from the council and myself. I'm going to start off tonight. There's been a lot of discussion in the community about a program, we talked about the swap program, and there's a variety of other initiatives that are going on. Different council members represent the city on a variety of commissions and so forth. Alderman Tompkins, Alderman Ambrose, and I do represent on the By State Regional Transportation Policy Committee, so the discussion, and it was a very difficult issue, in the sense of making a decision, do we stay in the swap? And that's one form of funding from the state, or through the state, and the other one, or do we opt out? And we have decided as a group to, and again, I guess I want to make importantly, our aldermen actually have all, we've had chances to talk about this as well, this wasn't done in a vacuum, we've gotten a lot of information, very compelling information from both, both sides of this discussion, and there's a lot of interest in the community, but I think for us, and talking to our aldermen as well, I think the majority are, are in favor of what we're doing, and communicated that to us, and we communicated to them, but we are opting out of the swap, and the plan is to, in fact, take the federal dollars as they come, and with all the conditions related to that, we think that's good for our working people, our community at large, and so we're, we'll be voting that way next week. There doesn't require, this is a point of, point of order or business, it doesn't require the city council to give us a direction, but we want to make sure we're all, we've done a lot of great things together as a team, we've listened to each other, there's varying discussion on this topic, but as an example, I just want to let everyone know that we'll be voting to opt out next week. So that's my comment. Thank you. The other one, and I don't want to, because Alderman McGinnis does such a great job with community engagement, but I happened to see Dave Heller today, and they're looking at baseball for the next week, starting on this weekend, so I think that's the world's longest road trip that they've been on, so they're excited about getting started. So I would say to let the community know that they're open for business as well. Downtown's open for business. My wife and I went to the Barrel House the other night, right down there on Second Street for dinner with our family. Armored Gardens is open, some other haven't yet, they're, they're working hard to get open as soon as possible, some have a lot higher mountains to climb, but I think we're all ready to be supportive of whatever they want to do, all of us coming together to make that happen. But let's get down to the ballpark. I mean, this is the time of year for ballgames to happen, so let's support the River Bandits and, and the whole community as getting everybody together. So that's all I have. Alderman McGinnis, you have a lot of great news tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to, first thing I have on my agenda is actually something that's flood-related. Many of you are familiar with Dress for Success. They serve local underemployed and unemployed women, they provide support, professional attire, developmental tools, and that group was recently lost its space and much of its inventory due to flooding. So some wonderful Florida-based musicians, Katia Valdeos and Cynthia Harig, and Cynthia is actually born and raised in Davenport, will hold a concert benefiting Dress for Success at the Figgy this Friday, May 24th. The doors open at 5:30 PM, and a donation of $10 or more is requested, so it ought to be a great concert, and I hope everybody can join us for that. Next, Bucktown Center, again, a flood-related change. Bucktown Center for its Arts is holding its Artworks Expo Pastel Competition, and this was to be down sort of at Second Street, but now it's coming to the Eastern Iowa Community College Urban Campus. They'll be using the plaza area as well as the sidewalk there. It will not, the sidewalk will not be closed for the event, but please come down. It takes place this Thursday from 9:30 AM to 4:00 PM. And then today, the city of Davenport announced Party in the Park. It's a series of summertime events happening in neighborhood parks across the city on selected Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 7:30. There'll be free food, entertainment, free entertainment, everything free, fun for the kids, community partner groups and city staff on hand at each event. It'll start at Cork Hill on Thursday, June 13th, continues through the summer at Van Buren, Peterson, Whalen, Tyler, and Prairie Heights Parks on dates in June through September. I want to especially thank Tiffany Thorne Dyke and Chad Dyson for their assistance in helping organize the event. Also, Mayor Clips and Alderman Rossen joined me today for the announcement of this. And for more events, you can, more, more information, you can visit the city's website, just type "Party in the Park" on the drop-down menu, and it'll be all the information, and of course, everyone from across the city is invited to all of these events. And then our third ward meeting, since we're not meeting next week, wanted to make sure that people knew that on Sunday, June 9th, our June meeting, will be at 2:00 PM, and we'll be touring the old Buchanan School, now the Naval Station Apartments, they've been restored beautifully. This area was quite an eyesore for the neighborhood for many years, and so that will be Sunday, June 9th at 2:00 PM, and it's located at 2104 West Sixth Street, so I hope you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, on the great work you're doing in that role as community engagement. Next, J.J. Condon, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to take an opportunity for, to highlight a unique happenstance. I wanted to personally thank Bill Dixie and Nathan at Seifert Lumber, my own family, and our small business history actually intertwines quite a bit with theirs. My dad has bought lumber from them for years. My cousin Kerry, who is sort of the happenstance, happens to be here, and his dad bought lumber from them for years as well, and now we both buy lumber from them, and I think that's a happenstance that's probably more common than not in the Quad Cities, as we recognize these small businesses, they're working together with other small businesses, and just highlight one other fine tradition, is, is these business owners putting up with the sons and daughters of, of the previous generation and taking us under your wing. So I'll personally thank you as well for putting up with me and, and helping me get to where I am today.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was shown a flyer that the YMCA Achievers Outreach Program is putting on an event in conjunction with John Deere, and it's the, it's hosting a team from John Deere to demonstrate virtual reality tools involved in welding, engineering, developing, training, and utilizing the products and services for the modern world. The, the bullet points to welcome people are my favorite. There's the future, anyone interested in the future of the tech and industry, a solid career path, or really cool stuff. So if any of those are interesting to you, or you're a teenager, you can stop by the Y from 4:00 to 6:00. On May 22nd, they'll be at the West Y. On May 23rd, they'll be at the Downtown Y, and June 3rd, they'll be at the North Y. So send somebody or go check it out yourself.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things, please. As we end school here, I just want to draw attention, this whole week at Davenport Central, they have been recognizing the students that are in the honors, whether, and they have four different levels of honors, so when you add it all up between the seniors through freshmen, there's about 1,300 kids at Central, and about almost half of them are in their honors program. So, you know, we hear a lot of things about schools, and we got a lot of students that are really doing well. And then the second thing, as we enjoy time with family and friends, and eat our burgers and brats and ribs and beverages, et cetera, remember why we have Memorial Day for the people in the armed forces that, you know, did the ultimate sacrifice. So I'd ask you just pause, or maybe go to the Rock Island Arsenal Cemetery, or someone else, or remember a loved one, just take a moment, pause, and, and remember why we have Memorial Day, and then enjoy your time with your family. Thank you.
And follow up with that, Alderman Mattson. 10 o'clock on Monday morning, there is a memorial service at the Rock Island Arsenal at the cemetery, and I'll be there, and so if anybody wants to come and show your support, it's a, it's a very concise event, but it's really great to show our support. There's a lot of veterans that'll be there as well. Alderman Dickman, another shot.
I apologize, I was so excited about the really, really cool stuff, I forgot to remind everyone that I will be having a ward meeting tomorrow at Fairmount, 6:00 PM, and we're going to be discussing water runoff issues, so definitely come check it out, it'll be a really good topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our individual items on a discussion agenda. I won't go into a lot of detail related to this, but last week, the agenda in its total agenda was gone through every single item individually, had opportunities for the public to have discussion. Aldermen have discussion. If there were no questions or no issues, then that was put on the consent agenda. These items that we're talking about had some questions or discussion, so we're doing those a little more detail. at Central and about almost half of them are in their honors program. So you know, we hear a lot of things about schools and we got a lot of students that are really doing well. And then the second thing, as we enjoy time with family and friends and eat our burgers and brats and ribs and beverages, et cetera, remember why we have Memorial Day for the people in the armed forces that, you know, did the ultimate sacrifice. So I'd ask you just pause or maybe go to the Rock Island Arsenal Cemetery or someone else or remember a loved one. Just take a moment, pause and, and remember why we have Memorial Day. And then enjoy your time with your family. Thank you.
And follow up with that, Alderman Mattson. 10 o'clock on Monday morning, there is a memorial service at the Rock Island Arsenal at the cemetery. And I'll be there. And so if anybody wants to come and show your support, it's a, it's a very concise event, but it's really great to show our support. There's a lot of veterans that'll be there as well. Alderman Dickman, another shot.
I apologize. I was so excited about the really, really cool stuff. I forgot to remind everyone that I will be having a ward meeting tomorrow at Fairmount, 6:00 PM. And we're going to be discussing water runoff issues. So definitely come check it out. It'll be a really good topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our individual items on a discussion agenda. I won't go into a lot of detail related to this, but last week, the agenda in its in total agenda was gone through every single item individually, had opportunities for the public to have discussion. Aldermen have discussion. If there were no questions or no issues, then that was put on the consent agenda. These items that we're talking about had some questions or discussion. So we're doing those a little more detail tonight. So the third, the first item under the individual items on a discussion agenda is a third consideration for ordinance number, for case number ROD 19-01, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend various sections of Title 17 of the Davenport City Code entitled zoning by correcting Scrivener errors and amending certain dimensional standards. For all of you, Scrivener errors are like typos. It's a real cool government term for typos. So with that in, is that right? Yeah, good. I was wondering, he was looking, they looked like I was saying something goofy. I probably was. Before we begin that, I'm going to have, ask Alderman Condon, who's looking to make a, an amendment. And we'll start, we have two of those this evening on this item. So I'm going to start with you, please.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to amend some of the language in this item, revising the language regarding the transparency requirement and separately how we measure a three-car garage. The specific language is before you on the desktop here. And Mr. Berger is going to come up here and help explain some of the specifics as well.
Bruce Berger, Community Planning and Economic Development. So if you recall, the, you know, the two criteria that Alderman Condon mentioned last week are spelled out a little bit more clear in, in that document you have in front of you. But to kind of summarize, the way in which we measure a garage will now be a little bit more flexible. Will allow, in particular, a three-car garage can fit, will be allowed in more circumstances, is I guess a good way to summarize it. And then in consultation with legal staff, we created a transition rule related to the window or the glazing requirement. So we're dropping it. And this, this transition rule does have a sunset. So as was mentioned last week, it would sunset on September 1st. And it drops the transparency requirement to 5%. It's currently at 15%. And then the, an add-in was that we would require an additional accent material on the balance of the property. So you can have fewer windows on that front facade, but you do need to bring in an accent material if you didn't already have one. And that's kind of what I think Alderman Condon worked through with the Home Builders Association as a good transition rule for now. And I believe maybe next week or the following week, they're working on maybe finalizing some language that could be brought forward with the next omnibus approval, which would likely be approved sometime, you know, before that September 1st timeframe.
May I make a quick comment, if I may? Just as a clarification, it sounds like a lot of information there, but really the goal is to have great curb appeal to all of our houses, not just the one big wall when you drive by the house. So these are unique ways of listening to the builders, but also finding that way to make the houses as attractive as possible. Thank you.
Perhaps I should have waited to invite Bruce up, but I'd like to make that motion for the amendment.
That's been moved and seconded. Anybody from the council have any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Whoops, I'm sorry. Ray, did you have a question?
We should pass it.
Oh.
We should pass it before we make the amendment. Move it to discussion.
Well, I checked with legal and got this passed. So I think the idea was to vote on the amended overall motion, but correct me if I'm wrong, please.
The idea was to place it on the table and then make the amendments if they were approved by the council and then offer it to the public for discussion.
So I move the consideration.
So we have a motion and a second for the, this amendment. Roll call, please.
He can make his amendment now.
I think he did. Did he not?
He did.
Yeah. Yeah, that was it. So roll call, please.
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kluel?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor. Great. That amendment has been, that consideration ordinance has been amended. We have a second request from Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to amend as well, propose new section 17.09.30K4 to add new subsection D, which says detached garages cannot be a pole barn type construction in any residential district.
Is there a, that's the, that's your motion?
Yes.
Great. There is a motion and a second. Any questions? Yes, Alderman Rossen.
Yes, I would just ask for the benefit of the public that's listening and hearing the room. Could someone from staff come up and talk a little bit about why we have pole barn in our ordinance and what's the maximum size? Because when I think of a pole barn, I think of a farm with a pole barn of 4,000 to 6,000 square feet, kind of a big empty room. And how in the world do we expect that to fit into a residential area? Take it away, Bruce.
Bruce Berger, Community Planning and Economic Development. Again, so good segue. The, what's before you now is, is something that I think Alderman Dunn caught with a particular, it may have been something that was overlooked a little bit in, in drafting the ordinance. In general, we have, and just to give you a bit more backstory, there's a couple of different sections of the existing code that do have some protections in place and do require some design standards. This fell into the R3 and R4C zones. And so the section you're about to consider an amendment on relates to how we define the detached garage and/or accessory structures. And so as it turns out, yeah, you, you can in the R3 and R4 zones have a pole barn garage currently in the code. And so one of the ideas that Alderman Dunn had throughout was this amendment. Honestly speaking, you know, we've just sort of been crafting this sort of like the previous amendment. Maybe something that in a subsequent omnibus, we may need to tweak a little bit and make sure that it fits well within the format of our new code. But this, this is a good, a good shot right now. And I think it's going to at least accomplish what, if you all are in favor, the general consensus.
Great. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bruce, you know, a pole barn can be very sterile or pole barn can be trimmed out to make it look very appealing. And I think the cost, you know, some people might decide to do a pole barn because of the cost. And, you know, I'm concerned that we would rule out a aluminum structure because we defined it as a pole barn. So, you know, I understand where someone wouldn't want a sterile aluminum building necessarily in their neighborhood, but to have a aluminum garage that has been trimmed out, you know, I think that's kind of unfair to someone that wants to build a garage in their yard. Can you, so pole, pole barn, sterile, aluminum building that's, you might consider a pole barn, but in actuality has been trimmed out with stone and other, and windows. You know, we just ended talking about three-car garages and now we're saying we can't do pole barns. You know, maybe we should slow down on this and have a discussion because we got a lot of manu, aluminum buildings that are manufactured here and are sold.
Is there a question?
Yeah, I just, that's correct, right? We just talked about garages and now we're going to say we can't have aluminum garages?
I think-
It's a little confusing.
If, Alderman Dunn may hold away and more as well. From staff perspective, I think one distinction we're making, especially with this amendment, is related to garages versus accessory structures. So I think it's a bit more common in residential districts to have what we would call an accessory shed as a pole barn. In general, a, a pole barn type structure is, is more appropriate in a, in a commercial district than it would be in a normal residential. Our standard, just in general, our, our goal in the new code was to elevate the level of design a bit. So this amendment is consistent with that raising of our design aesthetic. Having said that, as I just mentioned, we, this, this may be somewhat temporary language as well. And we'll be glad to kind of revisit that here in the next omnibus set of changes. And maybe we can tweak and allow some, some tricking out of-
Yeah, well, so maybe we should just slow it down and give staff a little bit time to work on that, like we did the windows and the garages.
I'm going to go to Alderman Dunn, since it was your motion. Could you fill us in a little bit more with your-
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Currently, there's a difference between a garage and a pole barn. But currently, somebody that has a 900 square foot home can build a massive pole barn on their property, which wouldn't quite, in my, my take on it, really doesn't match the, the surrounding neighborhood. So you're saying that, you know, folks that have, you know, nice brick garages and the neighborhood's a certain way, you plop a pole barn right in the middle of it. So that's just my concern.
Yeah, I guess I understand the pole barn concept, but you know, I think this got to be defined a little bit better between aluminum buildings and pole barns.
If I may, as a clarification, since it was your, your motion for the amendment, I think this gives us a placeholder that says this is something of a concern. We may not have it fully decided yet, but this puts it in there and gives us then and sends us or directs us to make sure we define Alderman Ambrose's concerns as well as yours, Alderman Dunn. And that may give us a place to hold that so we can make sure we revisit that. And as you mentioned, an omnibus is, we put all these different items together and we'll come back and prove all of them again, make, as the whole thing is finished, or bring more changes that might be in there, if I'm correct. That has a lot of items in there. Does that suit you? Alderman Ambrose, does that kind of get your idea too, that we put a place? Okay. Our next item, Alderman Condon. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, Alderman Condon's, pardon me?
There's something-
We got still questions to go. Yeah, I'm not, I'm sorry. These are still questions that are coming up. Yeah. Yeah, I know. I fumbled that one. Alderman Condon.
I'll just speak to this because I've been kind of walking this tightrope myself with, with the previous item. And what I'll just say is, with Alderman Dunn's motion, it's easy to appreciate the spirit that these are written in. It gets more challenged, the finer point that you get on these things. And I think what everybody's saying is, just as we're doing with the home builders, while we don't want to constantly open this back up and tweak it every single time somebody has a complaint, there is also simultaneously an appreciation that was written, that this was written as a very broad document. And where the rubber meets the road, we're, we're going to gain a finer appreciation of, of how these things need to be interpreted. So I don't mean to be redundant in, in what you were just saying. But it's something that I've been working with just in the, in the previous few weeks. And, and I'm hopeful that staff will continue to work with people in the industry and, and people dealing with this on a daily basis to, to find that finer point.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman McGinnis.
Yes, Your Honor. I was, I am growing a little confused by the discussion. My understanding of what we're looking at, this would be adopted. This is not for some later change in some omnibus. This is to, this, we're talking about and voting on adopting this tonight. Is that correct? Okay. I just wanted to understand that. And I had one question for perhaps Bruce. So these are detached garages in any sort of residential district, whether it's single family, whether it's multifamily, it doesn't matter. Is that correct?
So there was a little bit of a, kind of a, a gap, we'll call it. So the only place where this would have been allowed would have been R4. So this is closing that gap. There are, no other zoning district would have been allowed in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Gripp.
Yeah, I think Alderwoman McGinnis touched on it, but I want to reiterate that this, a couple of people have said that this could be like a temporary decision, but that's not what's before us. We're voting up or down on an amendment to the code here. And I feel a little bit uncomfortable just because it's, it's come to us for the first time, literally minutes ago. I, I don't entirely know and I would venture to guess that most people can't define a pole barn, pole barn type construction. So if we want to pass this, I would, I would be in favor of maybe putting a sunset on it while we can discuss it with the staff. But I, I don't, I just, I hesitate to consider something and then within five minutes, make a decision that, that becomes code. I'd like a little bit more discussion and time to think and make sure that we get this right.
Okay, I'll come back to that. Alderman Rossen.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I agree with Alderman Gripp. And I just wanted to clarify, so the R4 is currently the only zoning area where a pole barn is allowed. Is that what was just stated? Residential.
The only residential area.
Yeah, the only residential area. Because a pole barn is not actually allowed in other zoning, other residential zoning classifications.
Technically, just to clarify a, a little bit, actually, there are standards, there are a little bit tougher design standards than R3C and R4C. But to be honest with you, a pole barn, this direct language doesn't necessarily preclude a pole barn accessory structure in any of those districts. So what, what was attempted here was to try to say, okay, at least for garages in residential zones, all residential zones, there shan't be pole barn type construction. So it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit clunky in terms of language. And so kind of to your point, Alderman Gripp, you know, I think, I think staff, with a bit more time, I think we could ferret that out. So if, if you all be, you know, amenable to a sunset like the Home Builders Association want, I think we could, we could tweak the language and make it a little bit cleaner. But that's what it's preventing. Right now, you could have a pole barn detached garage virtually in every residential zone.
Okay. And that, would that be on an exception basis? Someone would apply for an exception? Or hardship variance or something?
It's a bit more complex and I could probably even speak more to it. But, but we do have design standards, but it's possible to get a pole barn-
In any residential classification. Okay. Okay. Yeah, and I would agree to maybe have some sort of sunset provision. Yeah, thank you.
I may, yeah, but let's go, Alderman Mattson first. Go ahead, Alderman Mattson.
There's no other discussion. I'll make a, you know, add after this one amendment to put a sunset of 90 days like the other one in. So can I do that now or do I wait? Okay, so I'll make a motion to put a 90-day sunset in.
Can we do that by roll call or we can do that by voice?
I, I would suggest, just for sake of continuity, that we make it to September 1st, 2019.
I, so be.
And can we do that as a voice vote or do we need to roll call that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Great. Now, we have the amendment on the table with a sunset on it or the two there now. No, I don't see any other discussion. Roll call, please. Do we, we do have a first and a second on this, I think, yes. Roll call, please. Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kluel?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
No.
Ambrose, no. Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Nine yeses, one no, Your Honor. Thank you. The ordinance is adopted with those sunset clauses included. So we'll deal with that and that'll come before us again. Our next item is a motion approving-
Your Honor?
Yes.
You said the ordinance was adopted. We just put it on the table for the amendments. We haven't, we haven't taken action on the ordinance as amended.
Ah, okay. Thank you very much.
You might want to let public comment.
Yeah. Thank you very much for being that. So we have the, now the, the ordinance as amended by both Alderman Condon and Alderman Dunn with the sunsets on both of those. Now, is anyone from the public want to speak on either that new amended ordinance? Seeing no one? Anybody from the council? Seeing no one? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Kluel?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
Nine yeses, one no, Your Honor. Now the ordinance has been adopted with the sunset issues that we've discussed. Our next item is a motion approving a noise variance request for the following events on the listed dates and times. These are all the sites for the Party in the Parks. So City of Davenport, and I'm going to give you just the park locations as we move forward. They're all 5:30 to 7:30. And we're going to add one that was left off last time. Cork Hill, Van Buren, Peterson Park, Wayland Park, Slattery Park, Prairie Heights Park, and Tyler Park is the one addition that we didn't have before. They're all, we're going to add that to there. I think we need, do we need a motion to add that at this point or just make it as part of it? We discussed the, we did not have Tyler Park on it last week. So we're just adding somebody- to there, if that's a formal motion to that effect?
Probably would be a good idea, just to.
I'll, I'll make a motion to add Tyler Park on.
Great, so we, we've got a motion and a second to add Tyler Park on August 8th from 5:30 to 7:30. Is there anybody from the public who want to discuss that? Seeing no one? Will an alderman move the motion? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the aldermen? Seeing none? Roll call, please. Sorry. Clul.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
And McGinnis.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you. Lastly, we have a motion authorizing the Public Works Director.
Pointing a clarification, Your Honor.
Yes, please.
We have to vote on the amendment before we vote on, that, that should have been voting on the amendment. That was voting on the amendment.
That was the amendment.
Yeah, now we need to vote on the motion on the table.
Thank you for that clarification. We did a lot of voting there, so. So now, we're gonna vote on the completed motion with the amendments. Roll call, please. Mattson.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you. Our next item is a motion authorizing the Public Works Director to waive permit fees for residents and businesses impacted by flooding during the spring 2019 events for those properties with a completed damage assessment by the City of Davenport. Again, it is important for the safety of our citizens. They go through that process. We're gonna try to make it as easy as possible and obviously waive those permit fees. So, is there any public with business on that particular item? Hearing seeing none? It's been moved and seconded. Would you please call the roll? Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Condon.
Me too, yep, yes.
Okay. Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
And Mattson.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you very much. Our next item is the approval of all the items on the consent agenda from last week. It's been moved and.
Seconded.
Seconded. Roll call, please. Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Rossen.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
And Dunn.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you very much. Are there any other ordinance or resolutions or motions tonight? Seeing none? Is there any public with business this evening? You want to come on up? Adam? And your team?
Adam McWilliams, Fifth Ward. Just wanted to give everybody a pre-heads up on a Special Olympics fundraiser. We've partnered with the River Bandits for June 7th. There's also a jersey auction and.
Pre-game parade, Amanda 80 with the River Bandits. We are having a.
Scooter, yes.
Flexibility awareness night at Modern Woodman Park on June 7th. We are celebrating the Special Olympics of Iowa Scott County, the Ark of the Quad Cities, and QC Lift. If you guys could come out, that'd be great, just help support the River Bandits and all those organizations.
Great, thank you. And you can connect that with our, our city staff as well. We can get that on our website and communicate that as well.
And there's.
Yes, sir.
There's also a jersey design designed with their designer and myself, so that'll be optioned up.
Great, well, thank you, Adam.
Yep.
That's great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other public with business this evening? Mr. Gilmore.
Good evening. My name's Dale Gilmore, and I live in the Sixth Ward. Two things, first of all, yes, I got my summer haircut today. Second thing, back when Cyphert Lumber Company was down on Second Street, my dad worked there. He was a designer back before the, the, yeah, boy, gosh, you do, okay. What I'm about to read was read by me at the city council meeting of May 20th, 2015. So, to a few of you, it will be a rerun. To the rest of you, please listen. "It's spring and the flowers are growing, so are the number of illegal signs growing in the public right of ways. You know the ones that offer to clean your gutters, mow your lawn, repair your drywall, give you swimming lessons, power wash and stain your deck, landscape your property, buy your house, clean your house, or remove your unwanted trees. And those are just the ones I saw on the way down here tonight. These signs in the public right of way are illegal and should be removed. I think they make the city look trashy. Store names or individual phone numbers are on all these signs, so contacting the violators should not be a problem. Just call the store the number listed, tell their, tell them they're in violation of ordinance number X whatever, and that they have 24 hours to remove their illegally placed signs. If the signs are not removed within 24 hours, the city will remove them, hold them as evidence, and charge the violators a fine of up to $100 per sign. I don't think it'd take too many examples to put a stop to this. Let's clean up Davenport one illegal sign at a time." End quote. And just, I'm, I'm asking for a friend, are these signs recyclable? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Ryan Drew. I work out of the Operating Engineers Local 150, Hall 3511, 78th Avenue West in Rock Island. Given the mayor's comments earlier today, kind of a different speech, but did want to stay and hang around to thank the council, thank the Transportation Policy Committee, members, voting members, and then the mayor as well. I'm sure many of you have heard of our No Swap campaign, and it's truly been a coalition not of just labor, but local business and recognizing them here tonight. I think it, it goes well with, with our theme of supporting our local contractors. Just a quick overview of, of the coalition that come together on this issue and, and wanted to stress the importance of supporting local workers, Buy America provisions, DB requirements, all these that, that come along with it. We know what comes with the cost with paperwork for the engineering staff, and that may have made it a little more of a difficult decision, but we appreciate it, and so do the people that have signed on to our coalition. Quad City Chamber of Commerce, Associated Contractors of Quad Cities, National Association of Women in Construction, Quad Cities Interfaith, National Helmets to Hard Hat Program, Tri-City Building Trades, Congressman Rob Sacks' office, Congresswoman Bustos' office, our local Iowa legislators, Lykem, Kurth, Dede, and Winkler, Great River Federation of Labor, the League of United Latin American Citizens, Council 10, as well as the Davenport NAACP Unit 4019. So, again, I'm not gonna bore you with a lot of details. I'm sure we've all heard radio everything else going on. Just wanted to thank you and, and also say that, I mean, this is something that the community should be proud of, that there's a strong skilled building trades presence in the community. Not everywhere in the country, not everywhere in this state, can you go and build a billion dollar bridge and use local workers. That is, that pays great dividends to this community. Those pension dollars, those training dollars, those health and welfare dollars are gonna stay in this community, in the Quad Cities for many years, and just like some of the retirees that are out here that worked on previous projects years before, it took support from the community. But I want to make one thing perfectly clear. The I-74 Bridge don't build the Tri-City Building Trades. It's the local street jobs. It's the Peterson Plumbing and Heating. It's the McCarthy Improvement that have been here for years and hire apprentices out of our programs from our communities and employ them year after year. That is, that's the feeding bed that enables us to build projects like this. So, so again, thank you for your vote, thank you for your time this evening, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I'm Mike Coughlin with McCarthy Improvement, and I'm here to echo what was just said. Thank you so much for your support of our area skilled, outstanding workforce, and by opting out of this fair, this aid swap, we appreciate it a, a great deal, and again, thank you so much for taking that stance.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bill Handel, retired architect of Nashville, Tennessee, also partial resident of Davenport, Fourth Ward since 1957. A few weeks ago, I presented the idea to council about a response to our current flooding situation, which I think maybe has some merit, which was possibly raising River Drive from perhaps the Centennial, from Centennial Bridge to, to the government bridge, and walked the, the area this evening, looking at the, the new raised railroad tracks, and, and it's what I expected to be, but it's, it's actually kind of surprising and, and somewhat shocking, and now the railroads are, are higher than River Drive, and you've got to actually approach the railroad and get on top of that to have a proper view of the river. And at that time, I mentioned other cities, at that point, I think, that Seattle, which raised its downtown area substantially back in the late 1800s, I believe. And I, somehow I forgot, I, I was a resident of Houston for many years, and Galveston is just an hour away, and as you may know, in 1900, it suffered the worst natural disaster in U.S. history. 7,000 of its citizens perished in a hurricane. It was essentially, that island was a sandbar. Well, what the, what the, the city fathers and mothers of Galveston at that time decided to do was build a huge concrete seawall, five miles long, a tremendous undertaking, and, but not only did they do that, because they realized in certain events, the seawall could be overtopped, they actually raised the entire city of Galveston about 12 feet, and go look at Wikipedia to see what it looks like. They actually did that, and I think their foresight and their dedication to do that is an inspiration perhaps to the very, I guess fairly trivial kind of thing that would have to be done to raise River Drive between those two bridges and perhaps beyond. And I think that that kind of a thing would be a final solution to our, our flooding in our downtown area, which, Mayor, as you've said, it, it's a fairly minor thing. People weren't, weren't, lives weren't threatened, but it, it did essentially shut down one out of, out of our four east-west roads in, in the city, and that has a tremendous impact in our, on our commerce and our, our citizens' use of the, the parkland, our farmer's market. I can imagine if this had happened in the middle of the summer, the farmer's market would be out of business for two months. So, I, I encourage the council members to, to maybe meet with the city administrator, the Public Works Director, the staff of transportation, and maybe the, the local contractors that would do a rebuilding of, of River Drive between this area, and, and perhaps look at a feasibility study, because I think, I think it's exactly what we need, and, and is the first step of the $53 million that were proposed on the, the recent design of the, the riverfront. I think some portion of that, I think ought to be dedicated toward a flood response on our River Drive side. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judith Lee, and I live in the area called Green Acres at 4621 Kelling Street, close to the establishment related to the rezoning of the GD Express at 4607 North Pine Street from C1 to C2. I am aware that this issue will be subject to a public hearing at the Committee of the Whole on June 5th, 2019. However, as I have investigated issues related to the rezoning consideration, I've discovered a challenging problem that I believe lies at the foundation of the issue, that I would like the council to consider and investigate further for yourselves prior to the Committee of the Whole meeting on June 5th. Contrary to the constant assertion that the general, of the general manager of GD Express at both the neighborhood meeting and the planning and zoning meeting, that alcohol has nothing to do with this request for rezoning, do the neighbors who must live with the problems associated with carryout alcohol and the selling of tobacco sold at the premises every day, especially if that is allowed to enlarge, which is why he's asking for a rezoning, and he's asking to be open for 24 hours every day under a C2 rezoning? It's really fundamental to the decision that the council has to make regarding this rezoning. After inquiries to the relevant personnel at the City of Davenport, I've discovered that, once approval of a Class E liquor license for carryout liquor sales at convenience stores per chapter 5.10 is approved, there is no apparent formal city or state process for conducting follow-on site visits for ensuring that the information and drawings provided for compliance is accurate to what is actually happening onsite during daily operations, and that there are no violations of either the license or the city code. It appears that once a license is approved and issued every year, it falls on other people, citizens, to report alleged violations of city codes at such establishments of convenience stores, including GD Express. The problems with what appears to be a lack of oversight include citizens don't know the code, or as well or at all, as the relevant city departments do, because I am told by the city revenue coordinator that every department approves the renewal of active licenses prior to processing and issuance, and I must therefore assume that each department is fully knowledgeable about the relevant code at 5.10. It's neither safe nor appropriate for a citizen to walk into these establishments looking for potential violations, especially after dark, and certainly not after midnight. And realistically, it's the responsibility of city staff, police departments, and elected officials to ensure that licenses and permits are acting as they're told and enforced. So, without a formal systematic and unannounced review of code and license conditions during operations at establishments such as GD Express after approval of a license or renewal, it's, it seems to me that the city should not approve a rezoning that institutionalizes the selling of carryout alcohol in a residential neighborhood zoned R4, such as the Green Acres area. So, my request, I therefore request the city council initiate an investigation into the, the apparent lack of a process for systematic and unannounced follow-up site visits to convenience stores with Class B, C, and E liquor licenses in the City of Davenport, and until such process is put into place, that this establishes not be granted a rezoning to C2, consistent with city staff recommendation and unanimous vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and other written and oral testimony of affected citizens presented before the PNZ. I object to the rezoning requested. I have some examples of concerns that I have seen, as well as the FDA actually had a formal warning to GD Express about selling Swisher Suites to minors and not carting them, and that was in 2017. I have a copy of the warning letter. I also went into another establishment a couple of days ago that's owned by the same LLCs that own this one, and I found Swisher Suites for sale on the counter, and I asked if that was legal, and they said, oh, yes, but the, it's, it's actually a federal violation. I've got, I, I went into GD Express, and I've seen what could be potential violations of the city codes at 5.10, 106, .40, and 106.